Rich, are you on a laptop or you have a desktop with a camera?
It's a desktop with a camera.
Oh, okay.
Got two screens up.
Oh, you're fancy.
Got to multitask. And we're live.
Okay, good evening, folks. Welcome to our November 12th working meeting of the council. Probably, I'm guessing, most of the people are rolled hands at this, but just in case this is your first time, you're just gonna listen to the council discuss some business. There's no voting on anything. We're not making any decisions on anything. We're just discussing some city issues. There's no public comment. There's no good and welfare, anything like that. So basically, just listening to us banter about some city issues we need to go over. So with that, I see we got Mr. Cantor is with us. So why don't we start with the benches on the boardwalk and what's going on with them? And we gotta unmute them, yeah. Tommy, you're muted still.
All right, how about now?
There you go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. The benches, where we stand right now is we just finished repairing all of the benches on the boardwalk, with the exception of the ones that have a top slat that's cracked with a plaque in it. There's 973 benches, and it cost us this year $50,000 to make the repairs, again, without the plaque. The plan is to go out, document each plaque, which we have on a computer. We have every single one documented. We have a picture of it with the plaque that's in place. And then when we put a new plaque on, what we would do then is, you know, update the picture. So if anybody's looking for their bench, or they want to know if their new plaque was installed, they can actually go on and look at it themselves. But what we're gonna do now is, we're gonna go out, and we're gonna take all of the plaques where the top slat's cracked and it's, you know, in danger of hurting someone. We're gonna put a blank plate up, and take that plaque back to the shop, take the plaque out of the slat, send it out to the company. And then what we'll do is we'll contact the resident that owns that bench, and we will give them three choices. One, we could take the plaque in its present condition and put it into a new slat, and then they'll send it back to us when we install it. Or they can choose to clean that plaque up, make it look as close to new as possible, or a brand-new plaque with the same saying on it, or they could add to it. Any of those, there'd be a cost to it, obviously. Normally, what we do is the resident would pay for that. We would give them, we would send it out to the company. They would send us a mock-up, you know, via email, and then we'd give a price attached to it. We'll let the resident know that the owner of the bench, rather, we'll let them know what it cost. And once they pay the city, then we can order the plaque. It will come to our shop. We'll unwrap it. We'll put it back into the bench. So far, we've been doing that. The only cost is exactly what the bench owner would pay for the plaque in the top slat. We don't add anything for a maintenance fee. So that's something I think we're gonna have to change in the future, obviously, as well as repairing the benches. Every slat on the bench is $90. And again, there's no maintenance fee for that at all. So that's something I think that we need to look into.
This is Liz. Every slat. How many slats are on a bench?
I think there's 12.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yep. And mainly, it's the, you know, the flat part where somebody sits. It's those that break. When we install the benches, there's probably, at the last leg, there's probably about a foot of the bench that overhangs. So with the sun beating on it and stuff, you know, the UV rays, they wind up deteriorating. It's a composite material. It's like a plastic and almost a sawdust that's combined. So one of the problems is that we have is when people are working out on the boardwalk, they do those box jumps, which if you don't know what that is, somebody's standing in a position and leaping up onto the bench as an exercise thing. That's one of the biggest problems that we have. People exercising on the bench and breaking it. So what we're gonna try now is when we put the bench together, we're gonna spread the legs out further so that we don't have an overhang. We'll have maybe like a six-inch overhang on the end. So if somebody does do that, it's not likely to break as quick.
So Tommy, let me ask you a question. You know, if you go out and you look at all the benches, they're all breaking in the exact same place. It's where, on the seat part, where the bolt goes through to hold the slots down. And on the back, it's also where the bolts go through. Is it, do we think it's just that, like you said, the materials get taken a beating with the salt air and the UV light? Or is this potentially a design flaw with the bench?
I think it's just that they're getting beaten up. It's, you know, they're pre-drilled, and the screws that go in, they don't go all the way through. You know, and then when we put it in, it's like a heavy thread. So I just think it's that it's getting beat up. And, you know, it's, people are more, are out there doing more exercise now, you know, because the gyms weren't open with the COVID. And it's just, it's to the point where a lot of the benches, they're 20-plus years old. You know, so the material is, like, outlived its useful life. So I think that's the biggest problem.
All right. Yeah, we're gonna have to figure something out with maintaining those things. $50,000 is obviously a big chunk of change.
I could have sworn there was also that there was an amount grossed up in the initial price to cover maintenance.
So there's... There is a price. Whatever the bench costs, it's usually about $2,000, depending on the wording in the plaque. And then the city adds a one-time fee of $1,000. What that $1,000 does, and there is confusion. People think it's maintenance. That's for us to order the bench, receive the bench, take it out of its packaging, put it together, and then install it. And then we've never charged anything for maintenance. So there is, you're correct. There is a one-time $1,000 fee in the very beginning when we purchased the bench.
So maybe we should call that an installation fee, and then ask Ina to work on pricing for maintenance.
I agree 100%.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Hi, this is Liz again. I have a question. So have we, have you looked at any type of new bench since those are over 20 years old? Or are we looking to continue to look the same? We start swapping out?
Yes, we've looked at other benches. We actually looked into benches that are made out of the same wood as the boardwalk, you know. The IPA, it's very expensive. It would hold up. It would look really nice because it would match the boardwalk, but it's very expensive. Any of the other benches that are any kind of metal, they're gonna rust. So this is the best fit for us besides the IPA wood, which I think the cost would be astronomical. And we also have to consider that there's really not too much room left on the boardwalk. You know, we have the north side. There's a few spots, but we don't put them...
I think 973 is a lot of enough benches.
Yes, agreed.
All right. Anyone else got any other questions about the benches? All right, so while we got you, Tommy, can you also update us on the lights there on West Bay Drive?
Yes, sir. The lights on West Bay Drive, they've been a problem for a while. It's just that they're old. There's underground wiring's been compromised. Some of the pole boxes, you know, the water's infiltrated in it. I've worked with Public Works. They're aware of the situation. They've been working with the company that we had, the lighting company, Wellsback. They've been working with them. They ordered material, as far as I know, to replace the few lights that were done. I think there's two or three of them. And, you know, for them to come in and put handhole covers so the wires aren't exposed, and then to find out what the issue is, we can repair it correctly. In the interim, on Veterans Day, we got a call from the department that, you know, somebody's, a dog got shocked from the pole not being grounded. Unfortunately, we've had that problem before. So I took the city electrician down there. And we, in conjunction with our new company, New York Trenchless, we cut the power to all of those lights. There's still streetlights all the way down Bay Drive, but on the walking path, there are no lights. But the safety office, the police department was there. They, you know, we wrapped it with caution tape. But the main thing is, there is no power to those lights until we can get it repaired. So I will definitely speak to Commissioner Morando and Fabrizio about how to proceed. We did take the time out to kind of find out what's going on. We have an idea of why it's happening. And I will definitely talk to the two commissioners, and we'll figure out what we're gonna do going forward.
All right. So in the interim, we don't know when those lights will be turned back on, I guess.
That's correct. I mean, we know what we have to do, but of course, you know, that takes money. I don't know how much that's gonna cost. I know we have a contract with New York Trenchless. I'll speak to Commissioner Fabrizio about how to go about it. But it's something that we need to definitely address.
When I saw you Saturday, you said, though, that Wellsback had ordered the replacement parts for the base to cover the openings. So are they gonna potentially be involved as well, or are they out of the picture?
It's that Joe Fabrizio spoke to them, and they did order the parts. They did order the four lights that are out on the walking path, and they ordered the parts, the handhole covers. They were supposed to do it before their contract ended. If that didn't happen, I know that Commissioner Fabrizio's been on the phone with them, and he's trying to get them down here to, you know, complete that. I'm not sure exactly where it's at. But if they're not gonna do it, I know that the Public Works officials will make sure that the new company does do it.
Okay, because the city manager and I took, when we walked down there and saw you over the weekend, there's quite a few poles missing those covers.
Yes, there's, I don't know how many poles there are. I think there's approximately 16 or 20 of them. And I would say that there's three-quarters of them are missing, missing those pieces.
And then there's one pole that's missing altogether.
Yes. I think there's either two or four. I forget. Fabrizio knows. He's been working on that project quite a while. But as far as I know, they did order the lights, and they have them. They just haven't come to pay for them. I mean, they haven't come to install them, rather. I'm sorry. So, but it's, now that we were down there, we looked into it. It's more than just the wiring being compromised because the handhole covers are gone. It's a whole underground thing. I haven't even gotten the chance to update the two commissioners of Public Works, but I will make sure that I do that.
All right. So we might have some repair work to do also, it sounds like.
Yes, sir. And then, I don't know if you wanted me to update you, everybody on the city hall?
Yes, on the doors.
Yes. We installed a new system, a new lock system, so that it works on a key fob system. We worked with Mr. Fraser on it. We, anybody that's coming into City Hall, from the city manager to the person who started yesterday, will have, if you're an employee of the city and you're in City Hall, you need to get in there, you'll have a key fob. It'll be assigned a number and a name. So anybody can go into the building at any time. And if it's after hours, we'll get an alert, so we know who's going in. There's a camera in the front of the building. We're gonna be setting it up so that we'll take, you'll be able to see who it is. So if, you know, Tom Cantor is, you know, number 1000, and you see that person swipe, and if it's not Tom Cantor, you could see that somebody's using a card that's not there. So it's good for, obviously, safety and for some of the people who are in the building after hours. You know, should, God forbid, something happened. They're alone in the building. They should need help. We'll know that they're in there. And it also cuts down on the staff, where we don't have to, if we have a city council meeting or something like that, obviously, we're gonna open the building to the public. But during the day, some people come in early. Some people may stay a little late. We won't have to put a special in the lobby. So we won't have to staff it as much. It'll cut down on, you know, on the employees. It'll cut down on any overtime if there's gonna be a small meeting and it's people who have a key fob. We don't need to put somebody in the building to open the door and to stay there for the length of the meeting.
Tommy, in my experience with security, certain employees normally work nine to five and therefore would not need access after hours and should not be able to access the building 24/7. So there should be a tiered system on who has access, in my opinion.
No, you're 100% right. And I spoke to the city manager. We're gonna make a list of everybody that should have a card, and all of the cards will be distributed exactly as you said on a tiered system. You know, city manager will know exactly who's given a card and for what reason, where they work, who they are. And it doesn't necessarily, like you said, mean that we have to give a key to anybody or everybody. So to your point, that's exactly how we're gonna do it.
That's for safety reasons. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions on this? All right. Thanks, Tommy. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Have a great night.
All right. Have a good night. And I see we got Mr. McNally with us. What's going on over at the rec?
Do you hear me okay?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So I have a couple of updates. One on the recreation center and the other more of a general COVID. So as the council knows and as we hope most of the recreational community knows, we were put in a position where we had to put out an RFP for the third-party vendors that operate programs out of the recreation center. We did that a little over two weeks ago. Those responses to the RFP were due today. So we have an internal committee that is evaluating the responses to the RFP. We're pleased to say that a vast majority of the entities that were operating out of our facilities, whether it be the pool or the ice arena, did submit their responses to the RFP. So internally, staff, the review committee will be evaluating those responses over the next day or so. And we anticipate having them, having the highest awarded ones to the council for next Tuesday's meeting. So if all of the stars align at the way they should, a vast majority of the programs that were previously operating out of the recreational center will be able to do so well in advance of Thanksgiving. So, you know, it would be approval by the council on Tuesday, and then we just need to dot the i's and cross the t's in terms of the legal agreements, which we already have drafted up. And then it's just, you know, sitting down with each of those third-party vendors to go over all of the ins and outs of it. And then, once again, we will have kids back on the ice and back in the pool and back to normal, hopefully.
Did we get more than one proposal for the various services? Or was most of the things just a single vendor for a, for a, whatever? You know, whatever service that we were looking for, were most of it just a single response? Or did we get...
So for the pool, we basically got a continuation of the services that were previously in there before we had to close things down. So we had one for competitive swim and one for educational training, swimming certification for lifeguards and Red Cross and such for the ice arena. We got most of the programs that we're currently operating out of there came back and a few others. So there was stuff on the ice and there was stuff off the ice that was operating out of the facility. So a vast majority of those came back. Plus, we got at least one other one that was proposed, a new service that would be upstairs at the ice arena, not on ice, but that was doing another service. We're not sure if it's the right fit for this RFP or if it would be something that's better served out of community services. So we're gonna be evaluating that as a committee as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
Do you mean community development or community services?
Yes, I'm sorry, community development.
So all the substantiation we'll receive in our packet, but tomorrow night?
No. What we're doing is we're evaluating all of the RFPs that have come in. We will sit down and look at, we have to look at what the city will be receiving as far as money, and we will then look at what they're charging the residents or whomever is coming in. And then we will put something together for it to go out. And then what we're gonna ask for is provisional approval from the council while we complete the contracts. Because they, and we can outline what's going on so we can get everybody back operating. Everything that's for the ice is on a month-to-month basis because we're gonna be putting out an RFP. And then the swim, one of the things that Ina definitely has said and we're looking at is that we want to make sure that the city is getting their portion, the correct portion of whatever money it is to make. So that's what I mean by, we will ask for provisional acceptance so we can get them back there so that the programs can continue while we go through the contracts.
So can I, can I ask for a conditional certificate of insurance for each entity as part of the provisional approval?
They have to have their insurance certificate, and it's included in the RFP. So yes.
So then we can, that could be part of the packet?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, the other program that we worked for sure that came in was a cook-and-learn. So we weren't quite sure how the cook-and-learn got in with the ice and the swim. But we're gonna do our best to incorporate it because it is for the students.
That could be interesting.
Yeah.
Frank's and Beans.
So as the city manager stated, there's, you know, we are working to make sure that these, you know, the relationship with our third-party vendors, who we very much value and have been providing excellent benefit to our residents. We wanna make sure that all of that's on solid footing for all parties involved. But at the same time, we know the position that our children have put in, where they got something back after what has been, obviously, a very difficult year. And then it had to be taken away for, which hopefully just gonna be a brief period of time. So, you know, there's the two different components here of wanting to make sure it's done right, but that we wanna be able to restore services for the children of our community as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else got any questions for John about it?
Not about the rec in the ice, but I'll wait till later if it's appropriate.
Okay, so the other item I just wanted to be able to give an update on was COVID, where we stand. And obviously, if anyone's not aware, some promulgation of new regulations or mandates from the governor. So all summer long, we were doing as a community very well in terms of COVID. We were averaging from a daily increase, seven-day average, so daily number, but smoothed out over seven days. We were averaging somewhere between half to one confirmed case in our community. And that's a positive test. How severe that individual case was, we have no idea. We don't have access to that data. But we knew that, you know, throughout our city, in area code 11561, there was the rolling average on a daily basis of, you know, half a confirmed case a day to one. In the past month or so, we've seen a gradual but steady increase in that. And the most recent numbers we have are reported out by Nassau County as of yesterday. And we're up to a daily increase, seven-day average, of six confirmed cases a day. We were somewhere on the order of 20, 30, 40 when we were really peaking in March, April, May. But we're not at a spike yet, but there is a steady increase. Councilors may have noticed that in coordination with our police department, our fire department, the Chamber of Commerce, we started a, you know, we swapped out our social media profile pictures with mask logos as a way to let residents know of, you know, this is getting serious, and please redouble our efforts. It's really masks save lives. The science is clear at this stage of the game. So we have concern with where things are going. We are urging our residents to, you know, once again, redouble their efforts. This is, you know, maintain social distancing, wear a mask. The science is increasingly clear. It's, you know, what the CDC just put out is, you're not just protecting others, but you are protecting yourself when wearing a mask. And wash your hands frequently. Wash surfaces, you know, that are commonly touched surfaces frequently. And what we saw issued by the governor via executive order yesterday was a mandate that all establishments that have SLA, State Liquor Authority licenses, need to be closed at 10 o'clock every night. That goes into effect tomorrow. Everything that I'm about to discuss goes into effect tomorrow at 10:00 PM. So bars, restaurants that have SLA licenses, even Knights of Columbuses and VFWs, all of those entities need to be closed by 10:00 PM every single night. If you are typically an entity that operates around the clock, there's a lot of diners on Long Island, obviously, so if you operate around the clock, you need to close at 10:00. You can reopen again at 5:00 in the morning. So that covers that element of it. The additional wrinkle, the additional issue that was promulgated by the governor was that residential gatherings, indoor or outdoor, need to be restricted to 10 people or less. So that is, you know, that'll be enforced the same way a noise complaint would be, is you have, you know, police show up at your door because you got a noise complaint. You can't have more than 10 people. That obviously impacts Thanksgiving. That's a lot of the flack that's coming back. But in the call that we were on with the state, we have weekly calls with all the other town supervisors and the mayor of Glencoe on a weekly basis with representatives from the governor's office. They have promulgated these rules because of the contact tracing that has taken place shows that it is these instances, both, you know, in bars and restaurants and in indoor and outdoor gatherings of private residencies, where we have seen the increase in infections take place. So they're trying to be, quote-unquote, surgical precision in terms of how they're rolling back the opening that has taken place these past several months to really constrain it to just where they're seeing an outburst or an increase in cases. So that's where we're at right now. We're hopeful that with increased and, you know, resurgence and diligence and adherence to mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing, and these new rules promulgated by the governor's office that we can avoid further shutdowns that we saw, you know, earlier on this spring and in the early part of summer. So that's where we're at from a COVID standpoint.
Is there, on the call with the county and such, I mean, are they talking about any kind of, I guess, for lack of a better term, like a PR slash advertising campaign to reiterate the mask-wearing? Because obviously, people are getting a little burned out on it. And the problem is this thing, and we see it, you know. So far here, locally, we've been doing all right compared to the rest of the country. But all you gotta do is look at the news and see what's going on in the rest of the country. It's gonna work its way back here. So...
So they have not, you know, what they have discussed is the urgency of the situation. You know, we're talking about what is likely a two-week lag in any data. You know, if we know anything about this virus, it's, you know, you can develop symptoms. And, you know, test results kind of roll. Some places are immediate results. Some places are a week. Some places are 10 days. But symptoms can lag up to two weeks, and then utilization, God forbid, deaths, can lag another two weeks or even beyond in terms of that is concerned. So I think what they are trying to do is communicate, not necessarily in a PR sense standpoint, but it's similar to how we're doing is, you know, we had the mask replacement of our logo. We've been sitting on it for several months because we just didn't feel that time was right because we understood everybody was a little bit exhausted by this. And with the numbers being where they would, we didn't wanna waste energy where we felt it would fall on deaf ears. And quite frankly, we didn't wanna be Thanksgiving or Halloween... Um, and quite frankly, we didn't wanna be Thanksgiving or Halloween cringes either. So we were, we've been following the numbers and got that, got past Halloween, um, and see those numbers continue to increase. So we, we have a level of concern at this stage of the game. We're, we're releasing that sort of minor campaign on our start, on our part, and will increasingly again be communicating the severity of the situation. And I think that's what you're hearing from the governor's office too of, we get, everybody was burnt out, everybody was relaxed over the summer, uh, we didn't see transmission rates, but this thing is starting to come back. It is once again real. Uh, the numbers across the, quite frankly, are astounding and terrifying. Um, and we just wanna make sure that we do everything that we can do locally to, uh, stress the severity of the moment, um, what we're potentially up against and make sure that we can avoid having to go back to where we were in the spring, if at all possible. Um, and that's by everybody doing, you know, what is relatively three simple things of wearing your mask to protect you, yourself, your neighbors, your communities, your loved ones. Wash your hands as frequently as humanly possible, um, or as appropriate, and maintain social distance. Um, it's, we're relative to the universe we were living in a year ago, um, but most people have gotten accustomed to it at this stage of the game. It's, it's not, uh, there's no political statement behind it. This is just what we need to, um, to keep ourselves and our neighbors and our families and our loved ones safe.
John, I have a quick question.
Sure.
For our restaurants that have to, uh, that are under the ten o'clock, uh, restriction, is that a total closure at ten, or are they still allowed to deliver or have pickup?
It is, it is, so they can do, so for in, in-store, in, you know, in-house, they need to close at ten. So if you're a bar, you need to have your last call by ten o'clock, and everybody needs to be out by ten o'clock. Uh, if you are a place that can provide grab-and-go or delivery for food, that can continue on past ten o'clock. So that's an excellent question and a good point of clarification. Um, that can continue on as long as the, the establishment operates. There is no restriction on grab-and-go and delivery, um, but it's, it's the, the, you know, and this is where they're finding it, it's, it's within closed quarters i- is where we're getting the infection. So this is where the governor and the state are trying to tamp down on things, is getting people out from closed gatherings inside, um, of establishments. So inside business needs to close at ten o'clock, but the businesses and restaurants can continue to operate from a grab-and-go, uh, and a delivery standpoint after ten o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
John, this is, this is Liz. I don't know, I mean, I know we're not a social service agency. Um, but is there a way that, and maybe Mr. Rich, you could answer if it's a legal thing, that we could let people know where they could be tested? Because the, that South Nassau thing, they closed shop a while ago. The little, where they were offering free testing. And I know City MD, the line is almost around the block, and it just is non-stop in the last week and a half. Um, and it's, it's young, it's old, it's every, everybody, so.
So you are, can we, can we put something out to show where you can go and have tests done?
Yeah, within one-one-five-six-one.
Yes, we can.
Can you designate between the rapid test and other tests?
Um, we can try, we have to call and find out what they do and, and get the definition of each test.
Thank you.
Oftentimes, just as a way of reference, when you look up these different places like City MD or Pro Health or any mobile provider, they'll generally tell you in their website. So if you have a hyperlink, they'll usually have what tests they offer, um, and kind of break down both for you. A lot of their websites have that, so maybe that's something we can include.
Yeah, um, the, the preeminent disseminator of mom information, Moms One-One-Five-Six-One on Facebook has some, um, varying thoughts on, on what places open. So that's why, you know, if we can be a consolidator, that would be awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, everybody put a mask on. Uh, all right, John, you got anything else?
That was it for me, if there's any other questions.
Um, I do, Mike Delory, good evening, John.
Evening, Michael.
Um, could you just briefly talk about how the hydrant flushing is going? And if people, um, need to know that don't know?
Sure, so, uh, we've been, we've had it up on our website and talked about it from social media, uh, as early as. Hydrant flushing started on Monday.
John, John, you're breaking up, John.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sitting out in my car while my wife puts my kids to sleep, so I'm doing the best I can.
Oh. Uh, nope, you were breaking up again.
Do you hear me? Hold on.
Yes, that's good.
That's good.
Is this any better?
Yeah, lift, keep your left leg up in the air and your left arm extended.
That's, I do that just correctly.
Yeah, now we, now we lost you again.
Yeah, John, all I wanna do is really just say that, uh, it's available on the website, it's rolling. And, uh, you know, people could just monitor it if they, uh, cuz it worked very well last spring. I thought it was exceptionally well, exceptionally done well where people, um, I, I think it was limited or no complaints.
You know what street they're up to now?
I'm looking on.
I looked it up.
There, the website was, is updated with the information overall. Tomorrow it would be updated to let everyone know the different streets that they will be working on. Um, direction, cuz it's two crews that are out there right now. So one crew is going west, one crew is going east. So the, although it says, uh, flushing, uh, hydrant flushing right now, it will be updated, um, by tomorrow with additional information.
So right now, right now, it's, it says Thursday, November twelfth, flushing will begin at nine PM on Monroe Boulevard and heading east to Lincoln Boulevard.
So it's updated already?
Right, and on, and on Laurelton Boulevard, heading west to Lafayette.
Right, so it's been updated, it's been updated. So as far as we know, the flushing is going well. Um, unfortunately, I don't have Commissioner Morando on the call, um, because he can get more into details, Mike. And so I can ask him to give you a call if you need more details about actu-, the actual flushing itself.
No, Donna, that was all, I just wanted to make residents aware that it is on the website, it is updated daily. And I, just a shout-out to whoever does this, it really has proven, uh, extremely helpful, and that's all, thank you.
So can you, can you hear me, Mike? Am I in a better spot?
Uh, yes, John, you're coming in loud and clear.
Okay, so it was, I mean, as I think has been spoken about, so we're updating on social media, we're updating on the website daily. Uh, it's, it's, you know, John Mooney and Michael Longen, um, from the Water Transmission. Essentially what they do is they start, you know, so you're looking at a, a water transmission system here. So they have two crews that start in the middle of the city, and what they're doing is concurrently moving east and west and flushing the system out.
We just discussed that, we just discussed that.
Okay.
So, yeah, we just discussed, and, and, uh, John Bendo read, um, from what was on the website.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else got any questions? All right, here and none, uh, I think that was pretty much it. This was, uh, we didn't have a lot, uh, we needed to really go over tonight, so, uh, so I guess we'll, we'll wrap it up there and let people go watch. What's that? What was that, Liz? Census? Were you talk, bring, bringing up the census?
No, it's now wear your mask and dispo your ma-, but it's not a meeting, so, next time.
I know, I know, wait, wait, wear your mask. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a political statement, it's a health issue. Um, all right, uh, just in time for people to go watch Jeopardy, I guess. So, uh, everyone, uh, have a good night, and we'll, uh, I guess we'll see you Tuesday at the city council meeting.